Public hearing to order, to order. Ms. McGough, will you please come and make your presentation, please? We're, we're, everything's good?
Yes, sir. I've got to take this off where my glasses fog up. Okay, we're here today to discuss the proposed county milage rate for 2020. So I'm going to go over a few things that, just some historical things, and then what led up to our proposed milage rate. This first slide here actually gives you a picture of what the gross digest has done, what the exemptions have done, and what your net digest is. Trying to see. So the top line is your gross digest. And your gross digest down here, it shows the rate of growth in your growth digest. And so you can see through the years since 2010 to 2020, there's been a couple of times where we've dipped, where we actually had some negative growth in 2012 and in 2015. But all in all, it's been going up with a steady climb, at least over the past three or four years, of somewhere between two and, two and three and a half percent. This next slide actually isolates the exemption so that you can see more clearly on a slide of its own how the exemptions have grown. So if you look at 2010, we had 163 million in exemptions. 2020, we're up to, oops, I'm sorry, we're up to 307 million. And you can see the growth of exemptions have definitely outpaced the growth of the gross digest. So while the digest continues to grow anywhere from two to 3.6, 3.7 percent, the exemptions are growing from about 3 percent, as high as 7.7 percent. And these are those exemptions. This lists out, in Liberty County is an exemption-rich county. But what I find interesting is out of all of the exemptions, there are two, the disabled veteran and the Freeport, that make up about 74 percent of our total exemptions. And when you look at exemptions compared from 2019 to 2020, the majority of them actually decreased. However, the two largest ones increased, so we had a net increase in exemptions of over 19 million. The next slide illustrates where the milage rates have been and where we propose for the budget. So the top slide actually shows you the county milage rate for the citizens of Heinzville. The county has two milage rates. It has one for the citizens of Heinzville, and it has one for all of the unincorporated citizens and all the citizens in the other smaller municipalities. So the Heinzville rate, the county milage rate for the citizens of Heinzville, you can see the trend. It held, you know, in 2010 from 11.3, and then it held, it dropped down slightly, it went up and held for a while, it went up and held for a while, and now in 2020, we're proposing 14.8 mils, which is up from last year, 14.44. The unincorporated rate and all of the other municipalities from 2010 to 2020, you can see again, we held it at 11.98 for a couple of years, jumped up to 12.98, went up to 13.84, went down slightly, went up, went down slightly, and again, we're now at 16.3, up one mil from last year where we were at 15.3. Let me show you what the, the digest growth consists of. So when you think about the digest growth, and you have two means of growth. You have real growth, which are items that have never been on the digest before. Those are new construction, new property that is coming on to the digest. Then you also have reassessed growth, where something that has been on the digest has been revalued, either upwards or downwards. This slide here actually shows you the real growth, which is in the green, and the reassessed growth that has taken place over the years, from 2010 until 2020. And you can see there were even some years where we had negative reassessed growth. So what ended, ended up happening in that particular year, we had so much negative reassessed growth that it outweighed the real growth. So in those given years, we had a net decrease in our net digest. This year, like, like last year, we had a good amount of real growth, and we had a good amount of reassessed growth. Let me talk to you about the Service Delivery Strategies Act, House Bill 489. And this deals with the two different milage rates that the county has implemented now for several years. Basically, House Bill 489 says that if a county and city contribute to the same service, a citizen should not pay for that service twice. So if I'm a citizen inside the city limits of Heinzville, and Heinzville contributes to the library, or contributes to LCPC, or the Chamber of Commerce, I should not pay for that service once on my city tax bill, and again on my county tax bill, because the county and the city contribute to certain services. And so those citizens who reside inside the city limits of Heinzville should get a rollback and not be charged for certain services. And so that's why we do a rollback, a different milage rate, for those citizens who live inside the city limits of Heinzville. And some of those examples include your fire protection, your building inspections, LCPC, the library, there's a whole list. And we take those services, and we identify a portion of the milage that they make up in our total general fund, and we roll back for those amounts. And this year, the rollback for the city of Heinzville is one and a half mils. So let me talk to you about how, how we come to the milage rate and what that's going to generate. So the unincorporated digest is about 414 million. If we apply the proposed milage rate of 16.3, we will generate tax revenue of 6.7 million. If we combine all of the other smaller municipality digests, collectively, they total 261, almost 262 million. We again apply the milage rate of 16.3, and that generates 4.2 million. And then the Heinzville digest is 650 million. We apply the proposed milage rate of 14.8, and that generates 9.6 million. Again, I'm noting that Heinzville is getting a mil and, mil and a half, one and a half mil rate rollback. Collectively, that generates 20.6 million in revenue. Our general fund budget was 35.7 million. If I back out all of the revenues, other than the property tax, including the CARES money, we're left with having to fund 19.78 million in tax revenue. You see here, we're going to, we're actually going to generate 20.6 million, but if we estimate a 96 percent collection rate, and in the past, we've collected anywhere as low as 94 percent and as high as 97 percent. So if we, if we estimate a 96 percent collection rate, that will, that actually turns out to be 19.8 million, which is a surplus of about 31,000. If we collect 95 percent, we will actually have a deficit of about 174 million, and if we collect at 97 percent, we'll have a surplus of a little more than 200,000. When you're talking about a $37 million budget, that's very small. That's a very small margin. And let's see what that means to the average citizen in the terms of dollars. So last year, if you lived in the unincorporated or one of the smaller other cities, and you had a $150,000 home, the taxable value is 60,000, the milage rate was 15.3, you actually had a county tax bill of $918. That actually does not take into consideration if you have any type of exemptions, homestead exemption, or KDW, or, or disabled veteran, or anything like that. This is not considering any kind of exemptions. This year, that same house with a milage rate of 16.3 will be required to pay $978. It's a, it's an increase of $60, which is about a 6.5 percent increase. In the city of Heinzville, that same house, that $150,000 home, again with no exemptions taken into consideration, last year's milage rate of 14.44 generated a tax bill of $866. This year, that same house at 14.8 will generate a tax bill of $888, for an increase of $22. And that is what I have. I'll be happy to entertain questions or...
You can make, Ms. Chairman, just one note. So you see the, the largest share of the difference, obviously, without the rollback rate to Heinz was in the unincorporated area. I think it's important to keep in mind, the, one of the major sources of that's obviously the full-time fire protection that is going in this year. It occupied over a million dollars increase in this year's budget, which was forecast last year, actually, came from the demand to have those full-time firemen on the street. So that is, I think it's, I think it's important to note, that was a heavy hitter.
Yep.
It was something that was needed in the community, the community expressed a concern about, as did the commission. The commission had made a commitment to fund it starting this year. So we will have three full-time crews stood up before fiscal year end.
Right, full-time firefighters in three different locations. And that is something that the board considered to be an essential service and to go ahead and fund after a lot of pressure and a lot of town hall meetings and, and, you know, consultations with, with citizens and, and the fire chief and, and what it would take. But we knew coming into this budget that our budget had increased over a million and a half dollars, so we knew that that was going to be a mil. We, we, we knew that coming into the game.
Kim.
Yes, sir.
George. Now, we're looking at the eight, was it 18 full-time firefighters, right?
Eighteen.
Okay. What's the projection for the next two years with fire service and full-time employees?
We haven't projected, we hadn't run the budget for next year, but we hadn't projected increasing the staffing next year. I can't really answer that at this point, because we really hadn't asked for a recommendation going forward.
And, you know, and that's why I would like to see a five-year plan coming from that building over there to see where we are going in the next five years, so we can kind of plan for it.
Right.
You know, although we, we did plan for this, but...
Yes, sir.
What's beyond that point is what I'd like to see.
There's a couple of things that we do as far as like five-year plans. We do a five-year capital improvement plan, and that's usually started and generated sometime in the December-January timeframe, so that we can understand what the capital needs for each function and department in the county will be. And then once we get that, we get that five-year look, then we go into the actual budget process where we project out what our operational needs are for just the next year. So we take those two in consideration, we look at what the capital needs are, what we have capital-wise, and then operationally, what we need. We have, as Mr. Brown said, we have not gone into those operational discussions and budgets yet. That usually happens sometime in the February-March timeframe, when I will send out those templates. I'll send out all the salary and benefit information and get those department heads to look at what they need going forward next year.
Yes, sir. And I was, I was really just addressing the staffing need. On the operational side, you know, we're in the process of going ahead and designing the main station, the Miller Park Station, as you're aware. That design hasn't been done yet, but once that design is done, we'll do an economical takeoff on the building for a look at energy consumption, go ahead and establish the budget so that we know, once that capital asset's built, what it's going to cost us to operate, and then we would know that. The only other thing I think about on the capital side is based on some discussions of a gap in fire service coverage that we have, some recent conversations on, on the Longreach Road area down towards Vire Bay, and the thoughts about putting maybe a substation there for some people who are rated a 10 currently. So other than those two capital, large capital assets coming online and trying to project what those operational costs are going to be, I think the staffing will be moving some people, as you know, from the Lake George Station to the Miller Park Station, so it won't be bringing on any more people next year. I really think that in a forecast for more personnel, it may be a couple of years down the road before you actually increase your staffing level there.
Okay.
Just a thought.
Okay.
And we are fortunate to have the growth in the digest, so...
Yes.
I guess we may as well go and say hats off to the growth that's pretty much centered in the city of Heinzville. We all benefited from it, but I also like to say that all of us shop in Heinzville. So while Heinzville may be the epicenter, you know, it's supported by citizens all over Liberty County.
Yes, sir, you're right.
I'm also reminded, if I'm correct, y'all, if I'm incorrect, y'all correct me, that last year we'd, well, this year, the milage was affected by public safety being the firemen. Last year was a little combo of firemen and the sheriff department, am I right?
Right. Yes, sir. Public safety, again.
Public safety, yeah.
Yes, sir, you're right. Those UGA salary study implements, implemented for those salary increases were significant. That was a significant hit.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so we're trying to ensure that the citizens are, are safe, whether it be police protection and/or fire protection. So that's been pretty much the, our focus when it comes to milage. Now, we want to remain optimistic that the digest will do the same thing next year, maybe or something close, because really, when I look at this, what, $31,000, not a lot of money.
No, it's not a lot of wiggle room.
Yeah, so we're really just breaking even.
Yes, sir.
But I'm glad we were able to, to break even.
Right.
But we would hope that, you know, and to what Commissioner Stevens, Mr. Brown said, when looking at the capital part, that could be in our future, that we were able to kind of maintain where we are, while at the same time, we're enhancing the services to the community. And I hope the citizens would appreciate that.
It would be nice, because this, we've gotten to a point now where we're going to be fully staffed firefighters. We've got our deputies up to a level that's inviting and retaining, retaining those deputies. And now it would be nice to just kind of hold steady and let that growth happen and generate enough without having to increase the milage.
Yeah, and I guess may as well, I'm talking, we did a little merit for the staff. Commissioner, what, at our, that's under CARES Act.
We haven't done any merit. We had, we had a COLA.
COLA, COLA.
We, we, we had a COLA adjustment.
COLA adjustment, that's what I'm saying.
In the budget, yes.
Right, right.
We had a COLA.
Yes, yeah.
That's correct.
Right, right, COLA, I'm sorry.
Yes.
For that, so...
You saw me looking at you.
Yeah, COLA, yeah, yeah.
All right, now everyone should feel, feel happy.
Yes, sir. I would think so.
Yeah, those are my observations. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll ask if there's any comments or questions from anyone, and whether they be on Facebook Live or, or live in the audience. It's Sprinkle. Yeah.
That's what Mr. Oldest Amerson used to do back there.
Yeah, I don't have my red flag.
You got to grab.
I remember those days.
You know, I got to pick at you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I just, I appreciate it. Bob Sprinkle.
Yes, sir.
Former employee.
Yes, sir.
Retired now.
Emeritus.
First of all, I just want to say, thank y'all for doing as good a job that y'all do with the money that you bring in. In my opinion, you're good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. Because I sat here a long time and watched y'all work and how y'all did, and you did a great job. Good stewards. Couple things. It's hard to get a total grasp what the milage increase is if we don't have a summary slide of what the other entities are bringing forth to Liberty County as a whole. I know that you have no control over what Heinzville does, or what the hospital authority does, or what the development authority does. You know, it's real good to see what Liberty County's effect of the milage rate does on a $100,000 house. Well, what does the effect of the others do for a homeowner that has a $100,000 house have? You know, what does, what does that total bill going to look like? You know, I was sitting there watching and listening to Ms. McGlocklin talk about the effect of, of the milage increase on the Liberty County homeowner that has a $100,000 house, I got to thinking what my tax bill looks like. And when it's up in the $2,500 range and $3,000 range for the type of house that I have, what does it, what does it look like for somebody else when she says, "It's only going to be this"? So I ask you if somehow that could be shown also. Not saying that everybody wants to know that, but it would also provide that information The other thing that I'd like to bring forward is that, not trying to question decisions that are made necessarily by the commission and what y'all do, however, there are decisions that you make that does affect the budget and affects the employees of Liberty County. I am very happy that you've taken care of them and salary. That is the best thing you could do. However, you passed an audit, or you passed a, a thing giving elected officials Medicare advantage with just two terms, eight years in office. That's going to cost us money, which does affect the milage minuscule.
Minuscule.
However, what do you say to your employees that work 10, 20 years and doesn't get anything? And here you've passed this, and they're not going to get anything. You passed an order, or changed the policy in April 2009, they took it away. Here you pass this, give an elect officials with just eight years of service, this. Like I said, everything we do affects the milage, affects the budget. You've taken your salary from supplements to where it's taxed, and now you've got into the retirement plan. People take notice. So I'm just asking you to pay attention, make it above board, and look at what your employees are doing, okay? As I said, you're great stewards of everything. You've done a great job. I love working here. I love each and every one of you. It's just those type of things that get on my skin just a little bit. Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate y'all very much. You've done a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the...
Don't, don't really have any direct questions, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chair. Oh.
So they're just making comments?
Just, just a few, just a few.
Okay, okay.
This, this presentation will take place again tonight at, at 6:00 PM, so in case somebody has seen this, and, and maybe it takes a minute or two to settle in, and maybe they'll have questions tonight again or something. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I was coming to you.
I apologize for doing it. McGlocklin, you say something about the Freeport, right?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm sorry, but, um, what is the, what was that, 77 percent?
Uh, the, the Freeport actually makes up 52 percent, I believe, of our total exemptions, over half, yeah, 52 percent. So in 2020, it was 159,517,585.
Okay, and I think I have mentioned that a couple of times, and that, that can be a very touchy situation on the Freeport. But I think we need, because I think the last time it was put out to, are educated the citizens, it's been, I don't know how many years, and Mr. Chair, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mosley, we need, I think we need to try to educate the citizens on Freeport, on that, what is it, one, almost 100 percent? 100 percent Freeport?
I think it is 100 percent.
100 percent Freeport. But we need to educate, and this would be another way of looking at, of letting the citizens know that if there's anything possible that we could do to lower and keep our milage down, also by educating them. And I know there's been an issue when, when I said, "Let's put it out to vote," that was a bad thing to say, but that's just me. I think education, education, education is the key to letting the citizens know exactly what's going on. And that is one of my, one of my issues that I will stand by on that Freeport.
I think we, normally, we do discuss that, I guess most times you present it to us, that, you know, when it comes to Freeport exemption, that's the competitive areas that Liberty County needs to compete for, industrial development, and 150-something counties in Georgia.
Probably, any of them that have an industrial authority or try to...
So nothing that's just Liberty County, so...
Right. Well, I understand what you're saying, other counties, but I'm looking at Liberty County.
Yeah, but we, we competing with other counties, though, you know, so to be competitive.
I think, I think we can prove it or do something with it, at least if we don't do anything, educate the public.
Yeah, and kind of like, well, those, those two, Kim said we're an exemption-rich county, and we're blessed to have, live in a military community, so a lot of veterans live here, so therefore, there are a lot of veteran exemptions here too, for disabled vets, so...
Right, let me, let me also just comment on, on something Mr. Sprinkle said, and, and I feel you, because you don't get a full picture of what your tax bill will do unless you look at the Board of Education, the city of Heinzville, the Development Authority, the Hospital Authority, and the county. There's five of us inside, at least inside the city of Heinzville. They are currently going through the same processes that we are. And I want to say they're going to adopt their milage rate maybe next, next week? I'd have to go back and look at those. So it's, it would, it might be premature of me to assume what their rate would be to come up and, and try and give a true total dollar impact. Certainly for the last hearing, by that point, I would have the actual milage rates that were adopted, and you could do an extra summary to see collectively what the, the taxes would be when you combine all five entities. I cringe a little bit if the county does that, because then it looks like it's the county. And I'm trying to present you just the piece of the county, without taking the brunt of all of it. So, but we, but we definitely could do that. And again, I used a $150,000 home, and, you know, some people, they don't have a $150,000 home, they have a $100,000 home. Some people have a $200,000 or $300,000 home, so it is going to vary. My understanding from the assessor's office that the average home, homestead at home, is about $100,000, which is a taxable value of $40,000. So I took a $150,000 home, just because I felt like it, it, it gives a, more of a worst-case scenario, I guess, than a $100,000 home. So, but I can look into doing something as a summary for our last meeting, because by then, all of the other milage rates will have been adopted.
You have to say, project it or something like that, otherwise...
Right, otherwise...
They'll take it for the gospel and hold you to it.
Right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Mr. Chairman, we have one question come in, and I think this was covered in the slide that shows the county milage rates for residents of Heinzville and unincorporated areas on that one slide. What is the milage rate currently? So currently, the county milage rate for Heinzville residents is 14.44, and the current milage rate for unincorporated is 15.30.
And again, that's the county milage rate, not the Board of Ed, not the Hospital Authority, not the Development Authority.
And not the city of Heinzville.
And not the city of Heinzville. That is just the county-isolated milage rate.
And again, the last thing, I'm sorry, but the la, the last thing is, we will take this and post this on Facebook. We can, we can take the presentation, I think, and run it up there, so folks can take a look at it and can relook at these slides. and can relook at these slides.
And Mr. Sprinkle, your points are well taken, so I've made notes of, but Kim said, I agree, we could certainly show those other proposed millage rates, but it would, it would kind of sort of be a gamble because some folk will take it to be the gospel and hold you to it as versus, and then everybody's not completing the rounds of millage hearings.
Right. Right, and, and I'm not sure, it, it's almost like when people complain about the, they call you and complain about the bus system, the transit. That's not a county operation. Or they complain about something else. I don't think, a lot of times, the average citizen understands exactly what budget funds what service all the time.
But, but I agree, it would be a good snapshot to see the total effect of it, I agree. Even as, put my citizens ahead for me, it'd be good to see what that total is.
And I can do that.
Yeah, as, as well as remembering that when we, when we make changes, the trickle-down effect, if I will say, with those changes, yeah. Thank you, sir. All right. All for good and order?
Yes, sir. We'll reconvene this afternoon for the regular meeting and then the lead-off of that will be another public hearing over the millage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good afternoon.